Welcome, everybody, to our City of Tom Water Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. It's 7:00 and the meeting is called to order. I'll do roll call. Commissioner Edwards.
Present.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Schumacher, I guess, is delayed. Vice Chair Sullivan. Commissioner Tobias.
Present.
I know Commissioner Varela will be a bit late coming on. Commissioner Van Holtz is excused, and me, Mr. Robbins. But we do have a quorum tonight, so off we go. Are there any changes to the agenda?
That has no changes.
Let's go to Commissioner Report. See if you have anything you want to report on. Uh, let's go to Manager's Report.
Well, we've got a new planner. Still responsible for everything, so we're happy about that. We are working through the Public Participation Plan notes that you presented. We've got a rather thick document going forward of stuff we think we're going to do. Now we just need to boil it down into a schedule and lay it all out. So I anticipate that we'll be bringing that back to you in April. Your March 28th meeting will be canceled. Start off with a April. Nope, we don't have a dual session in April, so it'll be just Planning Commission.
Oh, okay. All right. That's good. Um. Do you want to talk a little bit about any of the other, the rest of the schedule, or just that?
Oh, I just wanted to mention.
I'm wondering if you all hear me, and if you've been able to hear Grace. I do not hear you, and I do have otherwise sound on my machine.
We can hear you, Megan. Will try to speak well.
I don't hear Grace. I might have to troubleshoot.
I was on mute. I could hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
In the room, we can hear you, Grace. I'm not too sure if Megan can hear you. Okay. Pause a moment, just to. Megan, were you able to hear us here in the room? Um, I don't know how to.
Megan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I can.
That's good.
Can you hear me?
It's part of the.
Yay!
Yay, good, good. All right. Um, very good. Hopefully that's resolved. Um. Brad, you were gonna, were you gonna say anything more about?
Commissioner Tobias.
Oh, go ahead.
I just had a question about why was the upcoming March 28th meeting canceled? Just due to lack of schedule items or lack of staffing?
Lack of staffing. I'll be out of the office. A couple other things are happening that week, so we're kind of short on staff right now. Not short on topics.
And then the week after that, we got the notification of another stakeholder meeting?
Correct. The second community conversation will be on April 3rd, and we have March 20th and April 21st will be street. All these are on Monday at 7:00 here and also remote. So if you want to attend and you don't have, you haven't signed up yet, let me know and we'll get you the meeting invites. And Terry, we contacted all the HOAs that we had a contact for, for the street trees, and sent out some materials also for the tree preservation side. So there are about 8 to 55 on that list. I only heard back from about three or four of those, so we'll see how it goes.
I'd just like to let the record show that Commissioner Schumacher has joined us.
Mr. Schumacher is running late. I apologize.
Very good, thank you.
Good to hear. Good to hear.
Glad you're here.
One quick item to finish. The Attorney General's memorandum on takings I sent out to the commissioners before this meeting. I think it'd probably be good for us to walk through that at a future meeting. It really is sort of the foundation of everything that we need to pay attention to when we deal with land use issues, and changing regulations, helping policy, everything like that.
Especially maybe when we do talk about it in, you know, if we could weave it into where it's going to become really important in our comp plan update.
Correct. And the memo is 17 pages of explanatory text and more than 40 pages of case citations. So if you're like a planner, you'll just read the case citations first, but.
Yeah. This is not required by tonight.
Okay. I don't know that we need comment on that right now. We'll just.
No, if you have any questions as you're going through, just let me know.
It looks like there are a few people from the public here. I'll go to, I'll go to those folks, kind of in the order that I see them. Ms. Towesley, would you like to address the Planning Commission on general matters? If you could just state your name and any affiliation and where you live?
You bet. Good evening, Commissioners. Amy Towesley, local manager with Puget Sound Energy. I'm just looking forward to hearing the briefing you're going to get tonight on the Habitat Conservation Plan. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here.
You bet.
I'll go to Mr. Lucas.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, it's actually Ms. And, um, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to join you tonight. I'm joining as a citizen with multiple interests. The Growth Management Act update, as somebody who was early involved with Growth Management Act in early days, and I'm very much interested as a citizen, 26 years here, resident and homeowner in Tom Water, you know, as to how the updates to the comprehensive plan and especially the city's decisions on housing densities and addressing issues of, um, socioeconomic issues, I should say. I live in a senior manufactured housing community, and I'm kind of the, I'm the speaker, the spokesperson for our newly formed group called Tenants United at Western Plaza Mobile Home Park. We were formed due to our park this year being bought by out-of-state investors from Arizona, which the situation is direly impacting these elders, these seniors living here on very fixed low income. And we had hoped that the legislature would address some of the issues with rent stabilization and so forth, and they did not. So we will be coming to you next, the Planning Commission. We appreciate your work and your caring about our community. The fact that you're doing this, sitting at that board table right there, tells us how much you are caring. And then, of course, we'll go to City Council. Um, we are deeply concerned, of course, with the update of the Growth Management Act and the changes that are expected to come in terms of housing densities and rezoning potentially, and how that might affect the safety and well-being for our community. We are so grateful for the City of Tom Waters' manufactured housing zoning, and we want to protect that. So that's kind of why I'm here, in addition to just being a policy wonk who follows all of these kinds of issues. So, uh, thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to hearing more about the HCP. I'm interested in the public process that is going to unfold. I was kind of concerned in reviewing your minutes from your, not your minutes, reviewing the last meeting, in which I thought I heard your staff telling you there was only going to be one public meeting, and I would like to urge you to reconsider that as you're going forward with your planning on the comprehensive plan. And I just feel like the Planning Commission should have more input from the public, especially as your staff was telling you that they had abbreviated what the document would be, the size of the document. So that's kind of our input here from Tenants United, a lot of seniors, very vulnerable elders in your community. And you know how many parks you have here in this community, and the number of vulnerable citizens who make up those communities. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for those remarks, and I appreciate your taking the time to be here tonight. Brad, would you like to maybe quickly cover, I think we do have a good, a pretty solid public involvement plan?
Yeah. Mrs. Lucas, let me give you, first of all, we have a, we've got established an email for our comp plan update. If you would be so kind as to send me an email through that with the, sort of a summary of what you just described today at the meeting for both manufactured home park purchase, as well as the comp plan, as well as the HCP. The address is compplan@ci.tomwater.wa.us. And I would like to make sure I add you to our mailing list and everything as part of the comprehensive plan update process. We are currently in the, in the process of finishing our Public Participation Plan, which is going to lay out all the opportunities for discussions with the community at large, and also through our advisory boards like the Planning Commission and up to the City Council. The, I think the one meeting that was probably referenced was probably the one public hearing as part of the comprehensive plan adoption process. There'll be multiple meetings leading up to that, and there'll be a lot of opportunity for public input and comment. We're restrained under our rules for the number of public hearings we can hold on a topic. We can have that extended over multiple meetings, but we call it one hearing at a time. But I'd appreciate any information you could provide, and that would be, that would be very helpful for us.
May I respond, Madam Chair?
Certainly, please do.
Well, thank you so much, Brad. Sorry you were speaking quickly. I didn't catch the entire email address. And then you indicated, yes, so could you please repeat that? And thanks so much for the, for the, that, uh, that summary of actually what was, what was meant. And I'm sorry if I misheard it. Thank you again.
No, no. So the email is compplan, all one word, C-O-M-P-P-L-A-N, at ci.tomwater.wa.us.
Did it up in a chat or?
We don't have it checked.
Okay, we do not have that.
Thank you.
Repeat it again if. Okay, very good. And we have another person here. I can't quite make out the name. Lorlin Lirio, Lino, maybe. Lirio. Please go ahead.
Oh, I'm here for, as an observer. I'm from the Gulf News.
Oh, okay, from Joel. Thank you. I appreciate your being here. You did, in the meantime, since our last meeting, Brad, have you heard from anybody that would be relevant to our discussion?
We haven't had any public comment received.
Let's then move to our seventh order of this, the Bush Habitat Conservation Plan and our status update. This is a briefing session.
Can everyone see the screen, presentation? We're calling this the Habitat Conservation Plan 101 because I think maybe Megan and Terry were around when we did our initial presentations in 2017, not to date anybody. But we are now at the point where we can actually talk about a physical document that is out for not official public review yet, but for general public review. I'll explain that as we go through the presentation. So I'd like to cover tonight, first of all, the fact I can't see any of the screen here, so just a moment. There we go. There are six different things that we'll be talking about as part of this discussion. The first is we'll be touching on habitat and protected species. We'll talk about what the Endangered Species Act listing actually means. We'll talk about why we're doing the Habitat Conservation Plan in the first place. We'll give an overview of the plan itself. We'll outline the upcoming public engagement opportunities, and we'll, any questions or comments that you may have, we'll be happy to address those. If the commission has any questions as I'm going through the material, feel free to interrupt. Elizabeth, if you could let me know if anybody online or here has any questions. I appreciate it. So, couple of things to start with. As you're probably aware, where we're sitting right now is in the middle of the South Puget Sound Praire. This is a unique habitat. This was not something that was heavily forested, except that when we go towards Bush Mountain and away from this area. It was an area that supported many unique species over time. It has become extensively developed because it's nice, flat, developable land, so you've got the instant conflict there. As I mentioned, there are potential conflicts and there are real conflicts between any kind of development and the species that are here in the habitat. One of those species, one of those prairie species, and probably the one that most people know about is the Olympia Pocket Gopher, which is a subspecies of the larger Monzamba Pocket Gopher. The Service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, federal government listed the species in 2014. They listed each of the subspecies individually. So that means we have the Yelm Tenino and Olympia Pocket Gophers all as separate, essentially separate species. Thou shalt not mix the species, is the way it works. It's also the most widespread of the protected species that are, that exist within the city. There are other prairie species that we are including in the plan as part of this discussion. One is the Street Torn Lark. The other is the Oregon Vestre Sparrow, which has not been formally listed yet, but is on the probably soon-to-be-listed list. Both these species are primarily found, well, in the Street Torn Lark's case, only found at the Olympia Regional Airport. The reason for that is the Street Torn Lark really, 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 really likes big open spaces that it could see anybody approaching, because it nests in the ground. And 300 acres of open space is exactly what it likes. So they are found primarily at all the airports up and down Oregon and Washington, from Portland International, the Loma Valley, all the way up to us. We also have another species in the city that was also listed about the same time called the Oregon Spotted Frog. It's primarily found in wetlands and streams that are in the western half of the city, anything associated with the Black Lake Drainage System. There's a whole series of wetlands. When you go out on Trosper, you can see from the road easily, and if you're unfortunate, you can cut through it if you go through Kursop during a rainy season. That's prime habitat for the Oregon Spotted Frog. The ESA listing did a number of things. Number one, it protected both the species and their habitat. This is important, because when we're talking about the Olympia Pocket Gopher, we're not talking about individual pocket gophers. We're talking about their habitat, the prairies themselves. And when we're protecting the species, we're protecting, number one, the habitat. We're not going out and counting species and saying, we got 100, we need 200. Number one, because they don't come out. They stay in their burrows and they're very hard, if you're going to dig them out, that's going to cause more harm than good, is what it really comes down to. The range of the Olympia Pocket Gopher overlaps with us, the city, about the southern two-thirds of the city, and an equivalent area in the county, immediately to the south. We are ground zero for the prime habitat for the species, the city itself. There is far more limited Oregon Spotted Frog habitat in the city. Fortunately for us, most of their habitat is south of us in the county, all part of the Black Lake Drainage System and the Salmon Creek Drainage System, and it's all connected together. There are, of course, a slew of activities that could potentially harm or affect these species. We're in an urban area, so anything we do, from operations and maintenance, to building, to whatever, has the potential for causing harm to the species. If you're going to harm the species, you need to obtain a federal permit. It's a take permit under Section 10 of the Dangerous Species Act. That essentially gives you the right to kill, maim, harm species. The federal permit, not a local permit. So if we weren't to do an HCP on the city level, anything that somebody wanted to do within the city, if you're adding to your house, if you're building a new commercial establishment, if you're doing some level of large-scale mowing, like for our parks, in theory, you should be obtaining approval from the federal government in order to do those things. That's the scope of what this entails. Looking at this, both the city and the port, which is by far the largest landowner within the city and is most impacted by the species, in fact, all port lands are within the gopher habitat, decided to work together on an interlocal agreement to work on a Habitat Conservation Plan, which is, as part of an incidental take permit, which is the federal permit to allow you to do actions within a habitat, protected habitat or species area. The Habitat Conservation Plan is essentially the plan explaining how you're going to mitigate your impacts. And it's a, it could be a very short document relatively, or it could be a fairly lengthy one. So it's related, you get the Habitat Conservation Plan. It details what you're going to do. It's part of your larger incidental take permit that the federal government will issue when they're comfortable with whatever you have laid out in your Habitat Conservation. As I mentioned, take of the species, whether we're talking about the animals themselves or habitat, is a very long and costly permitting process. We have been at this since 2016. Not happy about that, but that's kind of where we are. If you're doing an individual permit, it could take a while. The service has basically given us priority to move our process through and put everything else on hold in the city until we finish our HCP. So there are a number of fairly large projects, both on the public side and the private side, that are basically waiting until we get our HCP done.
Let me ask you a quick question here. So would the Habitat Conservation Plan mitigate the need for a landowner within the area to get an incidental take permit?
Correct.
Okay, so by the city going through this process and suffering the pain, our citizens and businesses don't have to do that, hopefully?
Correct.
Okay, great. Just making sure I'm on the right page.
Yeah. And I'll explain the reasons behind. Obviously, there's that number one reason, and then there's a number of other good reasons that we're taking this approach. Talked a little bit about the incidental take permit, and also, again, if you're an individual landowner and you don't have deep pockets and a lot of time, it can be a very difficult process to do.
Just to pause for a moment, I think, just want to recognize that Commissioner Varela has joined us online. So thanks for, thanks for being here. Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. So we started to talk about the Habitat Conservation Plan and how it relates take under the Section 10. The other advantage for Habitat Conservation Plans is it allows for higher quality, more efficient, long-term species protection. So if you're doing an individual project, say, on 10 acres, and you have impact on, say, eight acres of that is gopher habitat, you mitigate for whatever those impacts on an equivalent-sized piece of land, essentially, somewhere within the range. Now, if individual HCPs continue to go forward, and there have been about four or five already that have been approved, it becomes a patchwork quilt of mitigation land. So small patches, far apart, and so forth, which isn't really conducive to getting the species unlisted, recovering. So with our process, we can identify areas, we can purchase land at a higher volume, in theory, and meet those, you know, it becomes a better issue, a better long-term strategy for getting the species back on, on track. We talked a little bit about trying to reduce the uncertainty costs and so forth as part of the new development and redevelopment process. It allows the development that we expect to see in our comprehensive plan to occur. It allows us to build the housing, you know, allows, allows us to let others build the housing units we need, you know, building everything that we call for, for the population that we're supposed to be getting, and so forth. It also allows for us to do, continue our ongoing maintenance and operations. That could be everything from maintaining our roadways to our park facilities, to City Hall, to all those things, our fall into that umbrella, as well as things like temporary events, like the airshow at the airport, or like our fireworks display, and shoots, and other things like that. It's intended to cover those kinds of temporary impacts. Funding has come through the federal government through a series of Section 6 grants. The grant monies come from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but are administered by the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. We've had three different grants. The Phase 1 grant was sort of the scoping grant for the HCP, establishing what we're going to do, what species we're going to cover, how big of the area we're going to cover, that kind of thing. Phase 2, we're currently still working on. That was granted to us in 2018. That's actually preparing the draft and going through the environmental review process that's required. And we were just awarded Phase 3 grant, which covers the additional costs that we're still incurring from preparing the plan and the environmental review, plus it deals a lot with the implementation side. Pardon me. The, getting the incidental take permit issued is one thing. It's another thing for us to manage that process. That requires, number one, that we train our staff to be ready to handle the permits and what's going to be required for that. It requires us to make sure the applicants know what the processes are and receive some level of training so they know what to be looking for and preparing. We have to be establishing our long-term monitoring program, because when we start allowing for development and purchasing and developing conservation lands, we're taking on a, in perpetuity, those lands are going to be active. So while the term of the HCP is only 30 years, the impacts in terms of dealing with the conservation lands will continue after that. So we have, have to have a process of being able to manage those lands or work with consultants who can manage those lands better than city personnel to do that work, and also report on an annual basis, back to U.S. Fish, about number of acres that have been impacted, number of acres conserved, and all that, to keep the HCP in line as we're going forward. The permit itself is intended to cover all area within the city and all port-controlled lands within the city. We're also covering all of the lands that are outside the city but are within our urban growth area, that are out in the county, with the expectation over the 30 years that it's likely that those areas will be annexed. So that's our transition. The term, as I mentioned, is going to be 30 years. So whenever we get the permit issued, the 30-year clock will start for this.
Brad, just real quickly, I understand that particularly the airport, controlled by the port, and the city, is where the species primarily are, but particularly out in the UTA, what non-governmental, you know, private land, larger parcels, are really that prime habitat?
A fair amount, but it's really divided up by smaller ownership issues. And that is one of the things that Austin Ramirez, our Economic Development Director, has been really working on, is identifying and purchasing either land outright, if it's available on the market, again, willing seller has to be there, or things like conservation easements. So say, for example, a farm wants to continue doing what it's doing but has the ability at some level to offer, you know, if they take away certain things that they do, to have some habitat value on those lands. We're also looking at options of what other HCPs within our area, if they have extra mitigation credits available. We're looking at purchasing those if possible. There's a translation issue, however, between how acres are calculated for conservation. There's a translation issue, however, between how acres are calculated for conservation value in one HCP to our HCP, so it's not necessarily a one-to-one. Uh, what they got credit for here may not equate the same amount for our HCP. So, the plan area is that orange block right there, um, that is the extent of the Oregon, uh, the Olympia Pocket Gopher Range. And then, if we break that down a little bit further, uh, we have what's known as the permit area and what is called the plan area. The permit area is everything within the city and its urban growth area, west of the Deschutes, and it, it cuts off, I think, portion of the Tumwater Hill and, and Bush, Bush Hill because of, because of the soils. Not conducive to, well, the gophers have attempted to drill up there, but it's taking them time, and it's probably not worth us covering it. This is where we're, any, when we talk about covered activities, meaning development activities, operations, and maintenance, and so forth, all that stuff occurs within the permit area. The larger plan area is the area where we'll be looking for habitat conservation opportunities. So includes the city, but also includes that area south into the county. We also have a lot of coordination work to do with the county, because in the county's plan, they're also covering this area. And, to my knowledge, they haven't purchased anything yet to cover for, uh, development in this area, so, uh, whatever happens within this area, because it's such a constrained area, we really should be talking and working together to make sure that we're not fighting over the same lands. So, that's been part of our ongoing discussions with that. The permit area for the street torn lark has been expanded pretty dramatically, it covers all of the South Puget Sound lowlands, that's everything from the islands in the, uh, Columbia, just north of Portland, all the way north of us. The reason for that is, we are really constrained in terms of where we could find mitigation uh, lands for street torn larks, since they tend to favor those large open areas, and those large open areas are the airport. Uh, and there are restraints on what we can do for the airport under FAA. They do not want to consider habitat, do, ongoing habitat to be part of, or conservation lands to be part of the airport.
Is the street torn lark a migratory bird, or is it, uh, full-time living in, uh, the rivers and, uh, lowland areas of Washington?
I believe it's a migratory bird, because I, it, it's, its range extends all the way to the south end of the Willamette, but I, I'm not, I haven't, I don't remember fully whether it, it, it has to migrate or, or, overwinter in this area or not. I think it, I think it does overwinter, because we haven't included anything in the HCP to say, you know, during the wintertime, you can do more stuff, which would be sort of the indication that you, you know, that's migratory.
Just quickly Googled it, and it says that it, um, it breeds and winters in this area, so it sounds like it's a full-time resident.
That's no bird.
Yeah.
Think they have a table at the Flaming Pigs, so, um, again, the four species are, are, in the first column is just the name of the species, the second column is their status under federal, uh, listing, so all of them are threatened, with the exception of the Vesper Sparrow, which is under review. And then on the state listing, um, the gopher is threatened, and everything else is on the endangered species list. So, really, this HCP is part, it is a federal document, but it's also intended to meet some of the state requirements that we'll have to meet anyway, uh, as part of this process. This is a, a, a flow chart that sort of describes the model that we use to, uh, we, we created to, um, try to estimate the habitat in the city for, uh, the Olympia Pocket Gopher. And it was based on, uh, previous surveys of land, uh, that either determined that there were gophers based on either mound activity or sightings of gophers, primarily on mound activity. So the first threshold is, does the area have both, uh, the grub, grass shrub cover and suitable soils? And suitable soils is a very broad listing of suitable soils for the species. Basically, again, the soils that are suitable are everything on the southern two-thirds of the city. That's, that's, that's suitable. Um, but, once we have that, it, you know, the, it goes yes or no, if it's a no, it doesn't, either it doesn't have grass shrub cover or suitable soils, it's not suitable for gophers, so we excluded that. If it's yes, there's the area known to be occupied by gophers. In some cases, we do have surveys that tell us this, or we have historic surveys that indicate yes, very strongly that this is the case. So, it falls under occupied habitat there. And this is sort of starts to break down the level. So the first is, if we know it's occupied, and we have recent done, uh, demonstration that it is occupied, that's level one. Level two is, those areas within 200 meters of occupied habitat or contiguous with habitat that is within 200 occupied, gophers move around. The assumption is, they're going to not stay where they are now, and they'll be somewhere else tomorrow. If you've ever dealt with moles or gophers in your yard, you understand that. So, we also included, as a second tier level, those areas immediately adjacent or within 200 meters of known occupied habitat. And we call that a high likelihood of occupancy, so that's level two. If they were just outside of that, and if, if no, we called it a low likelihood of occupancy. So they'll, I'll show you a map here in just a moment, illustrates what this looks like. So, the area in green, uh, on this swatchy map, are areas that we have known occupancy, that's the first level. The areas in blue, the swatchier parts, are the ones that have grass shrub cover now and are within 200 meters of known habitat. So you start to see how that fills out a good portion of the very southern part of the city. As you get farther away from that, where we don't have the surveys to tell us if there are gophers or not, we get into the yellow portions. And that's, that sort of fills out the rest of the area. And beyond that is where we don't have data, and it's beyond, I think, the immediately adjacent side of things. So, if we're talking about the area that we, we're anticipating that we have to conserve, or, I mean, have to plan to conserve, it's those areas that are colored on the map, that are within our permit area. So the areas in yellow that are outside of our city limits, those are areas we probably will target or look for opportunities for conservation, but we don't have to protect under our plan, they're probably protected under the county's plan. But everything within our area, we have to account for.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Uh, once the HCP is advised, will the individual landowner, landowners still have to hire a private contractor to certify whether their land is, uh, their land or not?
No, well, our process is, is tried to be more simple, so we focused only on what would be habitat, as in, you know, within the gopher soil areas, that's criteria number one. If they've got gopher soils, you assume you have habitat. So that's the only threshold. Now, our HCP, the, under state law, we can't tell the landowner, this is your only option. Uh, that's just not possible under Washington state law. If the landowner chooses to do their own HCP after our HCPs and process, they have that, they have that ability to do that, and go through the federal permitting process separate from whatever our HCP is set up to do. And that may include determining whether the gophers are present or not. This is a map of the habitat for the, um, Oregon spotted frog. Those areas in, uh, bright yellow are the wetlands, which are the primary areas, and those areas in pink and orange are the areas within the screen, or what is called the screen by the service. Areas where, during certain times of the year, say, over the winter or so forth, and water levels are higher, uh, the, the frog and may be in those areas to spawn, and may move out of those areas when the weather gets drier. So, there are particular areas that extend beyond the obvious wetlands that we will have to account for as part of this, um, HCP. So, and that includes a good chunk of those, those areas in the western part of the, the city. The good thing is, for the most part, our existing critical areas or regulations already address this. Basically, we have protections in place for wetlands and their buffers and so forth, that pretty much encompass most of this area already. If there's a need to develop within a wetland or a buffer in these areas, however, then there's going to be some level of conservation and mitigation needed, uh, to, for impacts. That will probably be in the, primarily in the case of, if you're thinking of Kershaw Road, anytime we go in and try to fill it up to make it rise it up for the next 10 years, so it doesn't sink any further, that's prime case number one. If we go outside of the roadway a little bit to do any work, that's another thing, that kind of thing.
Do we have any dedicated conservation areas within the plan, or, within the plan area or permit area at this time, or is it more just done, uh, on the basis of, uh, you know, conserving as needed?
We don't have any that are, are owned or run by the city or the port. There are three or four HCPs that have, uh, HCP, uh, conservation lands within the city, but essentially, those are already spoken for, meaning that they did a development of X number of acres, and they needed mitigation for that, and here's the X number of acres to mitigate that impact. In some cases, there may be excess credits available, uh, in, for those that, that may be available for purchase. Uh, it's a complicated process to try to paint those and use them in a different HCP.
That part of why we see, uh, certain neighborhood associations will have, like, dedicated plots of green space, uh?
Yeah, and, and like, for example, the Preserve is, is a good example, or the Kaufman Properties off of 99, you may have seen some signs near the airport. The, those conservation lands came in at various time points, I think the Preserve actually came in before the federal listing. So what was required at that time, how it looks, how it's kept up and so forth, is totally different from what the service, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife says needs to happen now. So, it, it's also harder to compare stuff that came in in the, the 2000s and 2010s to what we have now.
A follow-on, uh, to Commissioner Tobias's question, I'm wondering, for those earlier HCPs and their permits, um, when do they expire, and would they want to come into, uh, some sort of synchronized thing with the city?
Probably not, those were done as an individual project HCP, meaning that they had to impact, they had to mitigate for impact.
They don't have a time limit?
No, essentially, their time limit was, we had to do something, we had to create mitigation lands to offset that, and here's our mitigation lands that have to be kept up in perpetuity, but entirely under the rules of their HCP. Ours is a programmatic, so it's, it covers multiple kinds of things, multiple kinds of projects that could potentially occur, so it's also a different kind of creature than those, the HCPs that were done before. There wouldn't really be a good benefit to, to try to consolidate those, because they're, they're different goals for conservation, different, all that kind of stuff. Uh, as I mentioned, the, this is where the, uh, street torn lark is, the yellow area at the airport, um, and the areas that are, uh, sort of immediately adjacent to that are part of that process, uh, part of that. And then, I sort of misspoke about the Oregon Vesper Sparrow, they are definitely, well, here's the other thing, we don't know where the Oregon Vesper Sparrow is, because we haven't had any recent sightings of them. We think they're strongly at the airport, but we're not sure. However, they may be in some of these other adjacent store, grassland areas. The cool thing is, the, uh, the Oregon Vesper Sparrow, uh, habitat is much smaller requirements than the street torn lark. Street torn lark is about 300 acres, the Vesper Sparrow is probably, can go down to 50, which makes it a good thing to pair with the, um, the Olympia's Pocket Gopher, because we're looking for larger pieces of property that would probably work very well for the Oregon Vesper Sparrow. So, we have the scope of the HCP, we have the area it covers, uh, we're now going to move into the things that are called covered activities under the HCP, things that we can go ahead and do, that the impacts for these things would be covered by the, the HCP. The activities have to meet these six different, uh, criteria in order to be qualified, to be covered. First of all, it, it has to be something that the city or port will perform or issue a permit for the activity. So if we issue a building permit, it's something we can cover, even if it's a temporary permit for a parade or something, we could cover it. What we don't cover, and things like putting a shed on your property of 200 square feet or less, uh, whatever we don't issue a permit for, we can't technically cover under this category in, in the HCP. We attempt to do this by introducing an extra fudge factor of how many acres we think will be impacted over the long term, so individual property owners don't have to deal with that issue. And we sort of had to really finagle with the service about how to write that, but we think we got it. Has to be in a month or two, whether or not. Number two, location, has to be within our permit area, so anything within the, the city or its urban growth area, once it's annexed. Timing, again, within the 30-year permit term. Uh, impact, there has to be a reasonable risk of take to the species. And for the most part, for the gophers, you disturb the soil, that's it, that's, that's a take. Uh, definition, in some cases, it's hard to define what an activity is, and they seem to be kind of simple, but i- i- if you can't really sort of define the scope of the activity, it's hard to define what the impacts would be. So, there may be cases where we're not able to do that. Practical, uh, it's more feasible to include the activity in the HCP than not to do so. And, let me bring up one big example of this. We have, uh, on Black Lake Boulevard, uh, a mining operation, the ongoing, uh, mining operation. The level of permits, level of activity, the level of impacts from that kind of thing, um, over time and everything else is beyond the scope, really, of what the HCP is intended to cover. You've got your own set of state requirements and permits to get and all that, so we don't cover, say, if they wanted to expand that area. And fortunately, they fall outside most of the species, so it's not an issue, but if some simpling similar to that would occur, we wouldn't cover it, because it's a special case. Uh, so we've broken our covered activities into four different large categories, urban development projects, is anything requiring a permit, subdivision, brand-new building permits, all those kinds of things. Reoccurring activities, like I mentioned, the, the, uh, the fireworks, the airshow out at the airport, facilities, operations, and maintenance, anything that we do, uh, for the city or the port, uh, properties to maintain in, in, uh, existing buildings and facilities. And the fourth one is conservation strategy implementation. That means those things that we need to do to maintain those conservation lands, prescribed burns, for example, for prairie species, that's one of the cycles, actually, that the, the native prairies had to undergo to, to stay native prairie, was to have a regular cycle of fire. Or things like reseeding, or anything like that, that requires some impact, level of impact, to maintain and, and support the, you know, development of the prairies. Uh, the port has their own separate things. Uh, the first is aeronautical activities that are under the authority of the FAA, that's also under Section 7 of the ESA. Federally funded projects within the airport property, within the fence, that's really kind of the definition for that, so expansion of roadways, whatever. Operations and maintenance for their, their port facilities, and any capital improvements identified in their master plan. The effects, so, the next, we know what the covered activities are, and now we need to figure out what the effects of covered activities were, we had to work through that process. And so, that, what, when we do that, we're looking at not only the immediate effect on the covered species, if you're building a house, digging up a foundation, you know, you're disturbing the soil, obviously, the gopher, uh, but there may be other things over time that take place that have other impacts that we need to sort of take into account. And by impacts, that could be either direct mortality, or injury, or removal or degradation of suitable habitat over time. Putting a dog part next to a habitat preserve is probably an example of degradation over time. So we had to take the covered activities, look at the effects of those things, either at the moment in time they occur, or, or farther along, to get a better idea of the conservation that we need to provide.
Can we back up to, um, slide 37, the port activities? Um, and it just said, I don't know if there's an answer to this, but does the, does, is part of their activities covered by the HCP potential expansion of the regional airport? As a capital improvement?
Uh, no, I would say anything that occurs within the existing fence at the airport, meaning if they relocate taxiways, if they do expansions of runways that fit within that footprint, that would be covered.
So if they were to somehow move forward with expansion... So if they were to somehow move forward with expansion, that's beyond this?
If they go outside of their, what their master plan says they're going to do, then it would be above and beyond this HCP. Now, we cover under our HCP development activities within the New Market Industrial Park. Which is that area between the freeway and the airport. It's all port land. So that's handled exactly the same way that development anywhere else in the city. If it requires a city permit, we covered it. We counted for it. So that's a different, different creature. In order to figure out what development would look like over the 30-year term of the HCP. We worked with the First and Regional Planning Council to get some estimates of the urban growth potential for the area. We had a model that we could use based on likelihood of redevelopment, development to occur. It goes beyond even what we were doing for a comprehensive planning. Essentially, the 20-year cycle, 20-year time. You had to go out to 30 years and come up with a, well, I'll tell you in 30 years whether it was a reasonable estimate or not. That's kind of what it is. We, in addition to that, we took estimates for what we, the Port of Olympia anticipated to develop both on the airport and in the New Market area. We took out areas that were unlikely to develop, you know, either development was already underway now or they were mitigation lands or they're critical areas or things like that. And then we compared areas likely developed with assumptions about species habitat potential. Meaning where do we think that this, the growth is going to occur and is it going to occur in these prime areas for habitat? And guess what? Yes. It's going to occur in the primaries. It is already occurring in the primaries. With all that, we, and this was only one of the 47 different tables you can read in the, in the. This is probably the, this is probably one of the more important ones. Oh God, I don't know if I want to explain this one. So going back to the modeled habitat type, we talked a little bit about if it's a meets occupied, that's the first level. Higher likelihood of occupancy, that was anything within 200 meters of the occupied areas. And lower likelihood of occupancy was that area just beyond that. According to our model, we came up with these particular amounts for acres for each of these things. For each of these, we also came up with estimates for the total acreage removed as part of the covered activities that we just described. Meaning development activities or even temporary activities that are caused by operations and maintenance. And then the next, the third column is what's remaining after we take out the maximum amount covered. That's by the end of the 30-year period, this is what would be remaining in terms of habitat that hadn't been developed. And this is a percentage of that what we anticipate would be lost during the permit term. This doesn't include the calculation of what would be added back in as part of conservation lands. This is just the taking away part. So that first, excuse me, that first table here, this is for the Oregon, not for the Olympia Pocket Gopher. This is the big one. In terms of the impact, in terms of the number of acres. That 1509, under the maximum of removed, recovered acres. That's the amount that we anticipate that we're going to have to provide conservation for during the term of the HCP. So you want a magic number about what we have to protect for the species. 09 is it.
Can you pause there? I just want to check in and see if people, as we're sort of absorbing that, that table. Any questions or they're about to get another one?
21% of the developable of the area, the total developable areas that the.
There will be a quiz at the end, so if you could remember the numbers, that'd be helpful. We did this for each of the species. So this is the calculation that was done for the Oregon spotted frog. They have a little bit more than 2,600 acres of modeled habitat. We're anticipating a loss of 20 acres due to activities, you know, right away, building, things like that. And the amount lost is obviously far less than what the gopher would be, and the impacts would be far less. Similarly, this was also done for the street torn lark. This again is entirely on the airport itself within the fence. We anticipate that they would lose about 43% of their habitat over the course of the HCP. And then finally, the Vesper Sparrow. Model habitat, a little bit smaller than the gopher, but still, you know, 20% of their habitat would be lost during the term of the HCP. Now, a quick caveat, these are the numbers that are included currently within our HCP. We don't have a final HCP yet. Numbers may change. Hopefully not very, very much, and hopefully we don't have to change them again. That's all I'm hoping for.
We anticipate that those numbers or the percentages lost are within, I don't, what you, within tolerance for getting the permit?
What kind of tolerance?
Like, is that allowable? Are they too high to, to get the US Fish and Wildlife permit?
There is, there's no paying high enough, I think, for US Fish. The ultimate thing is if anything that we incur, we have to make sure we can mitigate for it. So it becomes more of a thought for us about can we find 1,500 acres of mitigation land to offset the intended?
Or, or set those somehow aside to not develop?
Yeah. So the service, we could, we could go to 100% if we could mitigate it. They're not aware of it. There's no cap on that. So the next step, now that we know what activity is going to occur, the effects of those activities and what those acreages look like after we do all that. Is to start looking at conservation strategies to kind of hold those numbers in line. First level of things that we need to do. So we're looking to minimize and mitigate impacts of taking to the maximum extent practically. So before we get to the one-on-one replacement of acreages, what other things can we be doing? That minimize our impact on the species and reduce the level of take that might be anticipated? That could be anything from, don't go into street torn lark areas that went during mating season. When you're going to gopher area, stay to existing trails and paths. Don't create new ones, you know, that kind of thing. So you're not compacting the soil and damaging the habitat. Those are kinds of conservation strategies to employ to sort of start to offset the effects before we get to the full mitigating. So it mitigates the impacts of the effects analysis, including direct, indirect, temporary and permanent effects. So that's, that's everything from, I'm building a building, I have to dig a foundation, obviously that's going to be a permanent impact. I've got to put down a parking area, that's going to be a permanent impact. But where I put my construction equipment on a temporary, you know, basis to lock it up between going out and doing things, that might be a temporary impact. They may restore that area after the fact, it's no longer. But we do have to account for the short-term effects on the species for that. All based on the best scientific data that we have, and that scientific data is being constantly updated and changed as we're doing this. It also goes to identifying the amount of land that we need, the criteria that we need to use to select it and location requirements. So if we're going to be looking for gopher conservation lands, we look for a number of different factors. Number one, does it have the proper soils? Doesn't have the proper soils, we can't use it. Does it have the proper ground cover in that? Maybe. A lot of the area, there's, there are few to none, no areas left in the county that are truly native prairies. They're all in some level of degraded prairie condition. Some may have, you know, a limited amount of shrubbery on it, some may have fully treed, all the way to fully treed, that kind of thing. If they've got the soils, we can, we have the basis to start something. It may take more time to say, and this is where we start to talk about logging trees to create conservation land for gophers. But it may, may take more time to get that area up to snuff for conservation value for the species. Number one, in addition to soils, we need to, for the gopher, it has to be occupied. Meaning that we, there are gophers somewhere in that area. We do have a clause and allocated some monies within the HCP to explore translocation. Which had been, which had been done and had been successful according to some of the nonprofits in the area. But for some reason, the service says, heck no, it doesn't work. According to the person we talked to, all they did was take a few of the gophers, trap the gophers. Take a hole, put some carrots down and cover it with a bucket, and then suddenly they had gophers. The service, I guess, wants a little bit more than that, but we were very happy about the, put the carrots down because we think we can afford that. But we have money set aside to explore those options because we, to be really honest, we have to look at other options. If, for example, those areas in yellow in the county don't have gophers on them, under the current rules, we can't use them for conservation. We could create a beautiful prairie, but if there are no gophers there now, we can't count it. Means translocation becomes a much more.
Maybe we could tap into some, we could call them homeless, and then we could tap into some county homeless ones. My greatest.
Perhaps, I'll talk to you about that one.
Helicopter dropper, maybe.
Does the, do some of the methods extend to things like limiting chemical usage? So that whatever the gophers are eating are.
Correct. Yeah. So on the conservation strategy side, yes, that's definitely things of that nature.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Tobias.
I just thought of this. I apologize if this is a dumb question, but what exactly do gophers eat?
Forbes.
Forbes?
Forbes, F-O-R-B-S.
Like little bugs?
Well, no, think, think Forbes as in like, things like onions, garlic. It's a, what it is, is underneath the.
Bulbs.
Basically, yeah, under, underground, things that are more substantial than, say, just root systems for grass. And that's what the native prairies had more of than even ag lime has now and so forth. So when, when we're talking about reseeding and preparing the lands and getting it back to prairie quality. It really starts to talk about creating those food, natural food sources for the gophers that they like. Making sure that those kinds of species can survive. And that means like, when you're dealing with things that are covered in Scotch Room, you can't have, the gophers can't stand Scotch Room, so we have to get rid of all that.
Right, yeah, the gophers.
The other semi-important thing to understand is the gopher, our gophers don't like other gophers. They're, they're asocial, which means that they only get together to mate and then they go their separate ways. Which creates a really interesting cycle of trying to convince them that in their benefit, they should be doing more together and they don't want to be together. That's another educational component of the HCP that we're working on. But let us off.
Gopher cafes.
Conservation strategy then creates those goals and objectives for the maintenance and ongoing management of those lands to bring it back to habitat. So when I was talking about the reseeding activities and the prescribed burns and whatever. Those are all things that are necessary to recreate that native prairie habitat and boost the habitat value and increase the likelihood of the gophers being there. We also have to build in the monitoring program. Is it doing what we think it's, we intended it to do? We're fortunate that we're not the first people doing this. We have, we've had experience in this local area dealing with local seed mixes that work, local things that have worked. That we can't take from other areas of the country because it doesn't necessarily translate. So we're in a good shape that way.
So Brad, I have a question about that kind of monitoring progress. And, because a 30-year plan, that's a pretty good chunk of time. And a lot can be going on there in that period of time. And whether it's to the good or not, does the plan, or will the plan include strategies to address if things are not progressing? Or if they are, if we are seeing recovery or partial recovery and being able to adjust?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things as part of that. Our plan isn't responsible for recovery of the species. That is something that the US Fish and Wildlife has their own species recovery plan. They've issued one for the gopher already. They just issued one for the spotted frog. They have their own ways of determining what do we need to do and what, what are the measurements that need to occur for us to say we've hit recovery? So that's, that's a separate thing from what we're doing. We do definitely have in our plan measures of, is it going, number one, are we putting aside the land that we need to for conservation? If we're not doing that in the first place, we have to stop issuing permits and everything until we bring those areas up to snuff. Meaning that if we have impact, we have to make sure that we're, we have the conservation lands equal to or better than what the impact is on an annual basis. So we report to the service annually to say, here's our impact, here's what our mitigation is, and it better be higher than what the impact is. If it's not, we have a year to try to get it back into balance. And if it doesn't get back into balance, we basically have to shut down until we get it to the balance. There's a, there's that. There's also the ongoing monitoring and reporting of the conservation value of the lands. So we're hoping that the longer we're able to maintain and keep the prairie lands and improve their value. That improves their conservation value. But hopefully we'll be able to take that excess value to offset impact, more impact over time. It's a long process to get that kind of value. It's not, it takes two or three years to sort of get you to the basic prairie level that works. And then multiple years on top of that to get it even a higher value with a lot of work in that process. We also have to make sure that, once we hit a certain level of prairie, we have to maintain that value. And that requires annual activities, but not to the level of activities that we needed to get it up to that level. It's, it's a bit easier, we don't have as much things that we have to do or have somebody do for us to keep that level. All of those things are part of the reporting that we do to the service as part of the HCP.
Commissioner Per Patrick.
Yeah, let's, I'd say 20 years from now, good job that the US Fish and Wildlife Service takes the Pocket Gopher, Olympia Pocket Gopher. Of the endangered species list. Could that change our, where we are on the HCP at all?
Yeah, two things could happen. There's language within the HCP that deals with a couple of things. Number one, one of the partners pulling out of the HCP is the port or the city over time for whatever reason. There are obligations that even the party that's pulling out still has to meet. In terms of the conservation lands they've already established and ongoing maintenance and perpetuity that has to happen. There are also provisions within the HCP that talk about, well, what if the species is delisted? What happens? We have the option. Well, I mean, the conservation lands that we created and all that kind of stuff has to remain. Because it was to deal with past impacts, so that continues into perpetuity. But we do have the ability to remove a species that has been delisted and no longer have to account for that within the 30-year term. That's not probably pretty likely, but it is an option that we can, we can definitely strive for. So the conservation strategy sort of looks at the full picture here of impacts. So we talked about the maximum permanent impacts to each of the species, that's the second column there. And we talked about the estimated protected habitat that we needed, which is, which is the same. We've also added an additional column here about total maximum temporary impacts. That's what I was talking about for like a late on yard, for putting equipment in that you're going to restore after you're done with construction. Or you're doing, say, right-of-way work and you need to be outside of the pave right-of-way to do the work, but you're going to restore it afterwards, that kind of thing. We still have to account for those temporary impacts as take of the species because it has the potential of harming or killing the species. But what we can mitigate that to a slightly different level than permanent impacts. So our ultimate totally, total permanently protected habitat of maximum impacts occurs is a range for the Olympia Pocket Gopher. Because it really depends on the level of temporary things that occur and a few other things. And that's why the number, this final column here is, is sort of the final step in determining the total impacts of what we're dealing with. Adaptive management. Adaptive management. So I'm guessing what the heading is because I can't read the heading anymore. We also have to include within the HCP guidelines about how do we deal with changes that occur in the 30-year permit term? How do we adapt to things and as, within a limited framework? We can't, you know, we're not going to reinvent the wheel. If, you know, something, we have a 20-year drought, that's something that's excluded from the HCP about something we truly have to deal with. But there are things that we're going to have to deal with over time that we don't necessarily know about now. So during the initial years of implementation, we're going to be evaluating our compliance with the HCP, the conservation that we set up to offset impacts. We're going to be looking at the status of the covered species habitat within the reserve system. The reserve system is those conservation areas. And it really, it's intended to be a focused area, you know, larger parcels, all those kinds of things comprised what's called the reserve system. And then look at the management actions on those species as implemented over time. So were we seeing a real impact when we, when we had, you know, told people to not use these particular chemicals, not to do these particular things? So we say we're going to have individual conservation strategies, but we also need to be evaluating the effectiveness over time. Also under implementation is what the city and ports' roles and responsibility are as the permities under the, under the HCP. That means, for example, the city will be responsible for reporting on the annual impacts, maintaining the monitoring program, maintaining the conservation of those lands into perpetuity, managing the money that's included in that, buying the land as needed as part of that. The covered activity application process, that's in addition to our permitting system. We also discussed the process for assembling the reserve system and other mitigation options, and that's where translocation will be another mitigation option or things that we don't know about yet that we could possibly convince the service would be worth trying. Annual compliance and reporting, again, as I mentioned, the city will be the primary responsible party because most of the impacts will be permitting and handling. Implementation, we have to take into account a number of uncertainties, like that total amount of development that occurs. We have our estimates. We'll see in 30 years whether we were on track or not, but we allow for and be able to understand how we're going to deal with that. Uncertainties in terms of frequency of operations and maintenance activities. We made some assumptions upfront for some things like we anticipate we're going to need to do mowing operations once every two weeks in these areas. Well, did we exceed that or not? Was it less or more, those kinds of things? The amount of onsite mitigation, was there opportunities in projects within the city to set aside lands that could serve as conservation that we didn't anticipate in lieu of a fee? And the number of projects proponents who seek coverage through the HCP. We have an estimate, we know that there's, we know the names of the people who are waiting. What we don't know are people who haven't come to us with a project yet. That could be just waiting until we do something and then suddenly they appear. I can't read that. Implementation and conservation, sort of acquisition, monitoring land costs, all of these things are covered under the funding side of this. The contingency, we have a contingency to deal with uncertainties. We have a trust that we're setting up to manage those mitigation lands into perpetuity. We have things that we're looking at for paying for adaptive management. We have our ongoing land management, monitoring and administrative costs. So there's a whole number of different cost categories within the HCP that we have to address. So it comes down to a dollar amount. And the number you see in the lower right is the total per acre charge that we're currently looking at for the city. Before we get to that point, we, as I mentioned, there are about six different components to the cost side of things. The plant administration side is the cost for us to do all the monitoring, reporting, do all the implementation. It pays a good portion of what Austin will be doing as part of the Economic Development Manager. He's going to be responsible for this, the plan once it's approved. We have a amount, the largest amount there is for conservation land acquisition of $50 million over a 30-year period. We've got the land management and restoration side of things. That's the ongoing maintenance of those lands, the reseeding, the burning, whatever we need to do to keep those lands and increase their habitat value. We have monitoring and adaptive management is also a pretty big component there. We also have, that's our 200,000 is our translocation research fund. So what we can do to convince the service that translocation does work. And then the last column there is the endowment. That's the money that is being put aside for the perpetual, ongoing upkeep of those conservation lands after the HCP is through. So after the 30-year permit term, we're not going to be collecting fees anymore. That means the endowment needs to be paying for the ongoing upkeep. It needs to be sufficient enough that the interest from that endowment will be paid. So for the gopher, which is our maximum species, we're looking at a total impact of about 1529, and we're looking at a cost-per-acre impact of $58,816. Now, that figure was about $52,000 two years ago, and that's why we're kind of pushing hard to get this HCP approved and done soon because we don't want this to go up anymore. This is similar to an impact fee, transportation parks or something, school. Again, it's a, the applicant can make a choice here. They can be under the plan, pay this one fee and be done. Or if they're big enough, if they have deep enough pockets and enough time, they could pursue their own permit through the service. That may or may not work. They will still have to find their own conservation lands and everything else and figure out the long-term maintenance and upkeep of those lands.
Commissioner Schulman.
So could we just run through a quick scenario? Somebody has 10 acres of property and they're going to build a house and they're going to disturb a total of one acre of dirt on their property. Is that a one-acre fee or is that 10?
It's a one-acre fee.
One-acre, okay.
It's level of impact. So first calculation is how much gopher soils are on the site. In some areas, so a portion is, in some areas it's the entire site. And then it's a level of total acres of impact on that site that we look at. And that's.
Unsubstantial?
No, it's certainly not.
Brad, before you go on, I'm just, a couple of questions about, you mentioned the endowment, and after the 30-year period covered by the HCP is over. Is it?
The contributions to the endowment are over through the fees, but the endowment itself remains due before, through interest, the ongoing maintenance and upkeep.
Okay, but wouldn't it, wouldn't it be the case that there might be a renewal of, or maybe it's the wrong word, but a new HCP?
Potentially.
So, you know, I mean, the endowment might still be going on, but you might have to get re-permitted.
Correct, that is a potential. I'm not intending to be around.
Me neither.
Hoping to be alive, but I'm not around to help. But yes, that is definitely an option. But what I'm thinking is, and I don't know how necessarily this would work because I'm not familiar with, you know, an HCP, 30-year HCP basically ending and a new one taking its place. My assumption is whatever conditions and things that were done under the first HCP to establish those conservation lands and that trust fund state.
Yeah.
They're not brought into the new HCP because that becomes a whole different, new calculation based on new science, based on everything else, that I think we probably can't do that, translate it well.
And by the time of the end of the 30-year period, chances are good that the city boundaries and even the UGA boundaries might be still different.
Perhaps.
I don't really know, but, and it could encroach farther out beyond the plan.
Beyond the permit.
Yeah, beyond the permit.
That may happen, however, with the, our 30-year HCP would only cover those activities within that boundary. If we were to, if we wanted to do, cover beyond that for whatever reason, we would basically have to go back to the service and amend the HCP to.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm kind of thinking about, either that amendment or that supplement. Were the.
It would be an amendment, and I believe the HCP spells out some of that process, but to be really honest, I, when you start to reopen an HCP to expand it a little bit, you've kind of reopened the whole thing. It, I think it's kind of hard to pull it apart and say, whatever we agreed to 25 years ago still applies, and we're going to expand it over here because science has changed, everything else has changed in the meantime, and understanding of impacts have changed. So my guess would be a whole new ballgame to some level if we try to expand the HCP after the fact.
And, okay, another question, maybe just with humor, is are there U.S. Fish and Wildlife grants to help cover some of the costs, for example, for land acquisition?
For mitigation, no. There's a strict line between if we have impacts, we can't ask the federal government to pay for those impacts. There are some conservation grants available to purchase lands where if we improve those lands to a certain level, maybe we can use that excess conservation capacity for mitigation. You know, if we, the conservation dollars purchased land worth a certain amount, and then anything above that potentially, we may be able to use for mitigation. But we'd have to obviously pay into that to use that for.
Or if not, like, you know, the federal service, then, you know, other entities like nature conservancy or land trusts or things like that. Oh, go ahead.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say was, you know, is there $50 million, 56% of that grant total? And if we could get some, you know, great conservation groups on board to offset some of that, it would be nice. And if we, I don't know if it's written in the HCP that we could offset the habitat conversion fee, you know, mitigate the habitat conversion fee with inflows to do land acquisition. I mean, that would be nice, who knows?
Yeah, there are provisions within the HCP that address sort of going beyond just the fee collection. There's the options that are spelled out in there about if, if a party has, say, has, you know, 100 acres and they know that, you know, it's prime gopher habitat, they could say, well, we'll give you 20 acres as conservation. There's the ability for us to evaluate that and use that as part of the HCP rather than collect a fee. We definitely will be working with nonprofits to help us manage those lands, like the Center for National Lands Management and so forth, because we don't have the expertise in-house for prairie habitat conservation, and that's kind of a specialized thing. So we want to make sure we rely on those kinds of partners, but we definitely will also be looking at other opportunities where we can for conservation monies that we can use outside to help supplement this. We're definitely looking and exploring that right now with the legislature and a few other places.
I encourage us to do that. Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Do any, are any of the fees that are collected proceeds go to either U.S. Fish and Wildlife or state fish and wildlife?
I'm sorry, Terry, could you repeat?
Do any of the proceeds from the fees collected go to either U.S. Fish and Wildlife or state fish and wildlife?
No, anything that we collect as fees go to those cost categories we've identified in the HCP, meaning that they're either buying the land, maintaining the land, doing research to increase the capacity of the land, funding the endowment, all those kinds, or doing the administration. So all of that is funding what we need to do. It's not going outside of those activities, not going back to the service, not any of that stuff. So we started to talk about when this would be collected. So the fee would be collected when we issue a grading or a building permit, or if there's, if there's not a grading or a building permit, whenever the final permit is issued. So that's a timing issue. That will help us identify basically the level of impacts we anticipate. Then we have to do a mad scribble to figure out if we've got the conservation lands or something that can happen fairly rapidly to offset those impacts. Projects such as park-subject mitigation fees but not subject to, okay, this is just another special case here. I'm not going to go through each of these. And not through multiple phases. Anyway, there's a lot of detail about the fee, when fees are collected and how much. This is, gets at your question about if we disturb a certain number of acres that are habitat, meaning soils, appropriate for gophers, this is what basically the fee would look like. This is a straight 10-acre impact.
The general rule of thumb, if an area is purchased for habitat conversion, does that area, does the value of that land depreciate because it can't be developed? Does it appreciate along, okay, I didn't know.
It would. All the development rights for that land and you're doing one thing with it now in perpetuity. So the assumption, obviously, that will decrease whatever taxes, obviously, you can or level, whatever you can, you know, collect from that. So yes, the value, the value is essentially locked once you're, once you say.
But would that value be logged immediately as a decrease or would it be amortized over time?
Immediately, because it really, I don't think it would be amortized. I actually, I don't know necessarily the answer, but my gut says it probably would not be amortized.
I just didn't know.
You can't require somebody to pay fee over time for something they can't do anything with.
Good point. Public loss on your taxes.
Yeah, there will be a loss in tax, there will be a loss in land capacity if this occurs within the city. We can't count that towards our area that we can count on for redevelopment or development under a comp plan.
Could we write it off on our taxes though for?
Probably.
Okay, like to be able to say, you know, our taxable base is diminished in some way, so we can write it off.
I'm pretty sure you'll be able to argue that.
Okay.
I'm not the finance person, so I'm not sure if I want.
There are people arguing that the earth is flat, so.
If you're adding a patio, oh, don't ask about this one. Okay, yes, there could be potentially a fee as part of that based on your level of your impact. We were not successful in arguing with the service that those areas that are, like, say you've got a lot in an existing subdivision that you're entirely surrounded by other similarly sized lots with similar sized fences, with similar dogs, with similar everything else that occurs in a suburban area, how to connect you can count that as suitable habitat. We lost that argument. That's why we have a fee for somebody adding a patio, and we apologize.
Yeah, can I just say real quick that I think that public education on this particular element is going to be absolutely key.
Correct.
And, you know, throwing the Fish and Wildlife Service under the bus, preferably, of course, is, I mean, when somebody says, hey, I want to build a shed, it's going to, well, $823 in gopher fees, they are going to freak out, understandably.
Understandably, and that's, that's where it becomes sort of very real. But we, if we didn't have the HCP, a property owner doing something on their property that has the potential to impact the species could make them liable if they didn't attain a federal permit. And that's sort of the hidden in the background thing. If we have the HCP, we can remove that liability issue. And we have to try to explain why things haven't changed. You still need a permit, you still need approval to do this from the federal government. You either do it under the HCP that we've done, or you obtain your own approvals. We have to try to explain why it's a lot simpler to pay a simple fee than to go through this whole process. Now, it's a lot easier to explain to a large landowner developing 100 acres, here's the whole process, they can do all the calculations. It's much harder on this level to talk about, oh, wait a minute, you know, I'm adding a patio. How is this really impacting?
Well, I think that, I think that you're absolutely correct. I mean, my gut instinct is you're 100% correct. But this is where the city is going to get just firebombed on Facebook. You know, I wanted to build a shed and it cost me $1,000 for just this gopher. I mean, I could just hear it, I mean, just, you know. And I think the city will just have to make a very, a big emphasis on education, you know, during the permitting process that, you know, this is what we're saving you from. You know, you probably never even knew the boogeyman existed, but they really do, and you would not want to go get a permit from them by your. you would not want to go get a permit from them by yourself. We've done a citywide permit. I mean, I know you're, you know, pushing the rock up the hill there, but boy, oh, boy, people will, word will get around quickly. Just two cents, I guess, yeah.
I think that's really important, and I guess I'd ask, is there something within the habitat conservation plan itself that describes that effort at education, or where would that eventually land?
The education process is separate from the HCP. The HCP is very purpose-driven, as in, you know, here are the things that you're required to include as part of the federal permitting process. The educational effort is something we'll have to explain as part of the process, as part of the implementation.
Sit down, as the counter right there, check.
Separate.
And that's where the implementation process comes in, educating not only our staff but the potential applicants, about what is going to happen and why. So that's part of that.
Maybe there is, though, a way within the habitat conservation plan, benefits of having one, you know?
It's, benefits are explained in the first chapter, but again, you know, it's a high-level benefit.
Yeah.
I'm putting a shed in.
Yeah. Commissioner Patrick has a.
So I guess the city's going to be impacted by this, too, as we build bicycle lanes and sidewalks, the city's going to have to pay into this file.
Yeah, we have to have, we have to demonstrate that either we have the land or we put the money towards the land, you know, as part of this process. So we, we're not out of this loop. And if you read the description of our covered activities, we had to go through excruciating detail on specific things to talk about, number of times during the year we're going to do it, how long it's going to take us to do it, how deep in the soil is it going to have to do, and how wide is the trench going to be, how's, so we had to go through a pretty extensive process to describe our ongoing operations and maintenance processes. And that's before we do a regular development.
Commissioner Schumacher.
Would it, would it be feasible or potentially beneficial for the city to buy 250 acres of land somewhere, just set it aside and use it in a reserve over the next 30 years as we build things out, oh, wait, three more acres and that kind of thing?
If we could find a willing seller, if we had the money, and if they had gophers, yes, that's definitely something we'd be interested in. It's the finding a willing seller, which we haven't had a lot of people approach of saying, hey, I've got this land, I'm willing to sell for whatever price. Gopher, we can probably luck out and find gophers, hopefully. But the finding the money to purchase the land is pretty challenging. We've been exploring options for purchasing credits and other things, and we've had to really kind of be creative where we come from, get our funds from, in order to get that to that level. And the level of credits that we get isn't as much as we really want. So it's definitely something, if we had all the money in the world, yeah, definitely, that would be our number.
It could be a lot cheaper now to buy that land than it would be in 20 years.
It, and it's another reason why we've been pulling our hair out about the time that's taken to get the HCP to where it is, because we've seen a tremendous change from 2016 to now, and we're not seeing it going down unless there's a gigantic recession and everything else busts, but I don't, don't see that again from 2008. We recovered from 2008.
Critically.
Well, I'm not emotionally and physically, but, you know, financially for some people.
We could call this some sort of a bank and get bailed out by someone. Call it Land Bank.
Some more recent.
So if you don't disturb habitat, you don't have to pay the fee. So maybe we should lead with that. That, that should be our opening.
And your riff.
So let me talk a little bit about the public process that's, has been ongoing and what will be going on in the future. Since we started this process, we've had five different stakeholder meetings, and mostly before the COVID hit. The stakeholders are about 35 different organizations, it's everything from the Audubon Society to the Master Builders, to state agencies, to the county, et cetera. Anybody who has an interest in developing or doing something in the city is basically on that, on the stakeholder group. We have, in addition to that, we've been holding a number of meetings with smaller groups of stakeholders when we need to, to really focus on, on their particular issues. For example, with Washington's Department of Fish and Wildlife, they have particular things, they're looking for particular topics they want to focus on. A lot has particular things that they want to focus on because they have land within the city, and certain activities they want to make sure that are covered. So we have, stakeholder meeting number six will be this Friday at the port offices. It is a, it's a stakeholder meeting, it's not a formal public meeting, but it's obviously we'll make sure that it, what's being discussed and so forth is made available. We have a, another meeting following that in April, which would be sort of, the, the meeting number six will be to reintroduce everybody to the HCP and to introduce them to the working draft of the HCP, which is the first complete draft that the, the general community has seen. April meeting will follow on with any questions and so forth that people have had, once they've had the time to digest that and go further in that. Those are the stakeholder meetings that are scheduled. I anticipate as we go further, if we still have questions, I'm sure we will, that we will want to make sure that we have the availability for more stakeholder meetings going forward. We have been doing special coordination with both WFW and FAA, meeting with their staffs on their particular issues over the whole course of the HCP. We anticipate doing that in the future. We're anticipating a larger community meeting also coming up probably later this year. We had one in 2019 where we sort of gave people the general outline of what we were doing, the process we were following, and presenting what information we had at that time. But that first meeting, we anticipate, the second meeting, we anticipate being either part or perhaps separate from the required environmental review of the project, because this, this project is a, is a federal permit and also will be something that will be enacting on the state level. There's both the NEPA and the SEPA processes that we have to follow. There are specific requirements as part of that for public engagement. That's the reason why we're not calling this the public draft yet, because the public draft has a very special meaning under NEPA. Essentially, once NEPA's started, that's your, your public, if your public draft's available, that means the environmental process has started. We haven't been given the green light yet from the service to start that process, but we can make a working draft available for members of the community to, to review it. The NEPA/SEPA process is, is obviously laid out, there's a very specific process that's laid out here. Depending upon the level of NEPA or SEPA review we're required to do, it's either an environmental impact statement, which is what the county had to do for their HCP. We've been in discussions with the service, hoping to get something less than an EIS, environmental assessment, which is the next level down, much simpler process, covers the same grounds, though. The reason for that, the service really has said to us that they did the EIS and then realized, well, what did that help with? I mean, what did it reveal that we weren't going to find out through the regular EA process? So they're open to looking at an EA, which is a different and shorter creature. If we do the, if we do the EIS process, it's at least a two-year process, from the start of the EIS to the finish of the EIS, and then issuing of the, the HCP and the permit. If we do the EA, it's a shorter timeframe. Obviously, that's in our interest. All those things involve some level of public review and comment. We can convince, we can do both the NEPA and SEPA process together. The city will be the lead agency for SEPA, U.S. Fish and Wildlife will be lead agency for NEPA. So any documentations that come out from the service on NEPA will be from them. They'll take comments and, and deal with it at that level. We'll do a similar process on the state level for the SEPA things. We are looking at probably using the same document for both. SEPA requires us to do a few additions to the NEPA process that will incorporate better additional elements that NEPA doesn't cover. Recent timeline, we issued the working draft, the HCP to the service, WFW, and the project stakeholder group on March 6th. That's eight days ago. Nobody has called me yet saying they've read the whole thing yet. Waiting to hear back. As I mentioned, our first stakeholder meeting is on Friday, the 17th. The second stakeholder meeting will be on April 21st. And then we've been having more than once a month meetings with U.S. Fish throughout the whole process to try to get this through. The project website, okay, I talked about the, hoping to have the, after starting the SEPA process by the summer, hoping to have the HCP approvals next year. We'll offer a caveat here. We've been saying it will be this for the past four years, and remarkably, those dates keep ticking out one more year. So if I kind of cringe or just do that kind of thing when I give you the timelines, I'm not going to say that this is what, we can't get, we, we have no control over this timeline. We can hope for this. This is out of our hands. The project website has the details of the stakeholder process, it has links to the working draft and any upcoming meetings and so forth. There is a, there is also a project-specific email on the website that you can send any comments. Those comments go to me directly, as well as to a person at the port. So both the port and city receive anything that come in through that, that function. So if any questions come that way.
Does the project website have a, a pretty, pretty thorough schedule of all the outreach opportunities and particularly with the public community members, but also as you're meeting with specialized groups?
It has the, the list of all the stakeholder meetings that we've had to date, including agendas, minutes from those meetings and presentations. It has the meetings that we have scheduled for the stakeholders, meetings six and seven in this month and next month. We have not added any meetings in addition to that because we don't have the firm schedule. Once we have a much better idea of what that actual schedule is, then we'll be updating the website.
UFO.
What we're, we're kind of in limbo now. We, we felt that we've waited, you know, a while to show everybody what we're doing, but we can't wait much longer to show people. At the same time, we're not to the level yet that we're starting the environmental review process. But, you know, I don't want to wait another year or so before we tell people, this is what you got, because we need to hear now what the concerns are. We have some time to react and change if we can.
I don't see anybody's, that's not somebody's hand raised, that's just your cursor, right? On Anthony's picture, okay.
Okay, well, I could just move it to places and you could think that Grace is raising her hand.
Yeah, I think the little hand raised thing looks a little different. Any, any further questions, commentary, suggestions? It's pretty dang thorough, Brad.
Deborah.
If you have any questions, or after you've had a chance to look a little bit more at the website or anything, or the working draft, or any of those things, let me know. I'm happy to try to answer your questions.
Making sure people have a chance to. Looks like our next meeting for March 28th has been canceled, but we'll be back at it on April 11th, and that's the joint one with the Tree Board again, right?
I, it says joint one on the Tree Board, I don't think you on the agenda itself. Yes, it will be a joint meeting.
Other than that, any further comments, Commissioner Schumacher?
The point is, you see that the legislature passed a book on enacting any new laws or regulations regarding rent increase issues for renters, residential or commercial. There was, there were some laws that floated around committee early on, and then I don't think anything got out of committee. And I would like to propose that we discuss this. I think it's, and I, I planned to bring it up before that community member at the Mobile Home Park brought it up, but it's a serious issue with, especially with low-income folks. And the, the mobile home park issue is particularly egregious, I think. There are numerous examples around the country of investors buying these mobile home parks and checking up the rent, you know, 40, 50% per year for multiple years on end. And, and I think at a city level, at a municipal level, I think we need to seriously consider some sort of protection, especially for those people, you know, essentially at the bottom of the economic food chain, they're the most vulnerable, and, and this is how you end up with homeless people, is you allow private equity to come in and ruin your housing. That's at least one of the ways you end up with homeless people. And, and I think that that would be a, a very serious topical thing for us to discuss and potentially recommend to the city council. And the, the time is, is, time is now. The time was probably five years ago, but, but sooner the better.
Yeah, I think that's a very, very timely thing to bring up. And for a little bit of background, in 2018, the council directed staff on a number of issues to start to address homelessness and affordable housing. One of those items was, what can we do to preserve manufactured housing? We were fortunate in a way that the city has manufactured home parks zone, and that actually passed a legal challenge all the way up to the Supreme Court, state Supreme Court, that basically limited what people can do to the land, what your manufactured home park can sit. There's a, you can't convert it into a commercial use, you know, like you can see in a lot of areas. There are a couple parks that weren't part of that, that are subject to those issues. So that, the first conversion threshold has been met. The much more difficult thing is the annual rent increases for the land on which those units sit. And it's been something that the council has really been pushing, that we need to try to figure out what they can do, and we've been struggling with what can we do? One of the things that we really explored and we've been talking ongoing with a, a number of nonprofits is options for land trusts, meaning if there's a willing seller and the, the residents are, have the ability and, and whatever, to basically buy the park and turn it into a land trust that can keep those costs within reason. That's, that's the biggest thing that we've seen, aside from what we've already done in terms of zoning, sort of freezing things in place to try to deal with a cost issue. We definitely see this as a huge thing to deal with, because you very rightly said, we're not, we don't want to push people out of homes to begin with, to make a worse problem even worse. And we recognize that, well, number one, we're protecting the manufactured homes through the zoning process, because we know that it's, number one, it's, it's the affordable option. And there are about 800 to 900 units in the city of, of that type.
Wow.
It's, it's a pretty big component, and it's sort of our natural affordable housing component.
Sure, right.
And so we've been, I, it's been very frustrating, because we've had somewhere, you know, we've heard the stories and we know, we know the issue, and we've really been trying to figure out what can we do on the city level to really help with this. And some of it's beyond what we can do, some of it is, is just sort of, we need to push harder with others to deal with us on the state level, those kinds of things. But I, I think it's a very good, good topic for discussion, I'll look to schedule that. Also, I think that's a good time to talk about the, the tenant protections and the rental housing registration ordinances that the council just passed for all renters in the city, and what that means, and the rental website that we're putting up and that kind of thing. So I'll look to schedule something, probably April, well, probably May or June, if that works.
Thank you.
Okay, any other remarks, suggestions, or requests, or motions? Commissioner Tobias.
Commissioner Tobias, I motion we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Schumacher seconding. Looking at the screen, I don't see any hands raised. All right, good deal. All in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Or any, any opposed? All right, thanks, everybody, our meeting is adjourned.